It's order. Everyone should take a moment to mute their cell phones. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on cable channel seventy-five. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream and the CUNY Board of Trustees website. I now move that this meeting convene an executive session pursuant to Article seven, Section one oh five of the Public Officers Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, investigations, and litigation. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. We are in executive session. We'll reconvene in public session. On March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Trustees convened an in-person Brooklyn Borough and Public Hearing at the New York City College of Technology. Fifteen individuals testified in person and six testified via Zoom. Most speakers were members of the PSC who opposed any tuition increases as well as the university's savings initiative, which includes cuts to adjuncts and the interruption of faculty searches as a result of the reinstitution of the Vacancy Review Board. One member of the PSC reported the organization was not in favor of the, quote, "expansive and accelerated vision of the CUNY online initiative" and sent this testimony directly to each of you as well. Several students also testified about the university's contract with Pepsi, which is set to expire this year, expressing their concerns about the unhealthy options Pepsi offers. CUNY graduate students advocated for the reopening of the Grad Center cafeteria and their support for the People's Tantry at the Grad Center. One student testified about our positive experience as a member of the Kingsborough Community College basketball team. Two professors from John Jay College spoke about the elimination of the public speaking requirement in John Jay's Communications Department and the closing of their Theater Department. Twenty-one testimonies were submitted, and as always, the written testimony has been shared with the Board and the Chancellery as well as posted to the Trustees' website. Trustees have been very busy this month. Six trustees participated in the CUNY Women's Conference Week, including their participation on numerous panels and an excellent panel discussion on CUNY TV moderated by Carol Ann Riddell. Additionally, Vice Chair Sandra Wilken participated in the CUNY Luncheon in Albany honoring CUNY Caucus students, scholars during Black History Month, along with the New York State Association of Black Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian Legislators. And special guest Daba Mandela, and a number of us had the opportunity to meet him when he was here, the grandson of Nelson Mandela and the author of Going to the Mountain Life Lessons from My Grandfather. Searches are ongoing for the president of the College of Staten Island and the dean of School of Professional Studies. And I'm pleased to announce that the search for the president of Hunter College has begun as well. We look forward to welcoming new presidents and deans to the university in the coming months. And again, let me thank you, my colleagues, for your participation in these. It is, again, we're going to double your salaries for participating in these search processes, but I can't tell you how important the role is and how much it plays in the future of City University and all of our institutions. I am pleased now to welcome this evening some of our students participating in the notable university-wide disability programs. Vice Chancellor Denise Maybank, can you please introduce the four student presenters joining us today?
Thank you. CUNY is a lot of things to a lot of people. Today, we bring before you four students who represent a cadre of students who overcome against odds that for most of us seem insurmountable. And they do so unapologetically, fearlessly, and as you are about to learn, with a style all their own. And so we changed the order up just a bit from the cards that you have in front of you, and we will lead with Isaiah Moore from Hostos Community College representing the CUNY Adaptive Sports Program, followed by Mary Avia from Hunter College representing Project Reach, then Malik Arthur from New York City Tech, who is a graduate and representing CUNY Leeds, and we will wind up with Lanin Jacobs from the School of Professional Studies representing our student organization, CCSD. Isaiah.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, definitely my first year getting back into school. I've missed out on school for a while. In twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, I ended up going to a school for adaptive sports, which was Edinburgh University. My experience was different, right? And this is kind of where I'm excited about CUNY and CUNY Adaptive Sports because I didn't have an option to play wheelchair basketball in New York. I had to go seven, eight hours away in a place that snowed every day. Transportation wasn't perfect. Disability Services wasn't good either, you know? And then the overall conversation of getting answers to how things were going to work wasn't good as well. But I definitely don't regret my experience, but to have an opportunity to speak in front of everyone here and, you know, my coach, Ryan Martin, that allowed me the opportunity to do that as well. Definitely a completely different experience being here, being twenty minutes away from home. You know, that's important, you know, being around family and each and every day being able to communicate with someone that can help me academically and anything that I have questions on. Being able to travel with friends that I've played against or, you know, that now become my teammates is important for us to be able to have that opportunity to do that each and every day. So I thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to do that because it was tough to be able to say I'm not going to be in close proximity of my family. But to now be in New York and be home and be in school, I don't take that for granted. Being in a place where I felt like I quit school, I quit, you know, basketball because I didn't have that opportunity. And this is the only opportunity that's twenty minutes away from where I need to go. So definitely appreciate your time. But like I said, that's the biggest thing about CUNY Adaptive. There is many of us who are in wheelchairs that want to play our sport and want to thrive and want to go to school, and the fact that you've given us that opportunity is amazing and I appreciate each and every one of you. Definitely want to keep it going as much as possible because, again, there are thousands of people that I know that are either in Pennsylvania, Connecticut, Jersey, that have to go fourteen, fifteen hours away, sometimes it's seven, for the closest school, which is Edinburgh. But to be able to go somewhere where it's two, three hours away, family can drive and be there to support them and things of that nature, it's important for us to have. Definitely keeping this around is one hundred percent for each and every person that looks to the left and right and says, wow, I can go somewhere where my family can see me and I can get my education and I can have the services that I need in order to thrive. So I thank you, each and every one of you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mary Avella. I'm here to represent Project Reach. I'm a junior at Hunter College. So, good evening. As I was preparing today for this, a statistic kept popping up in my head, the numbers ten to one. Now, you're probably wondering, where is she going with this? The numbers ten to one is the ratio that autistic people are ten times more likely to kill themselves than normal people. The good news is you all have the power to change that. Through programs like Project Reach, people on the spectrum are given tools to have a valuable life, such as balancing work and personal life, battling mental illness, and their schoolwork, for example. And my mentor in the program, she has helped me tremendously, not just with my personal life and my work life, which I really just started, but knowing my value as a human being, why I deserve to be here, why I deserve to be in this room, and which I sometimes didn't know myself. And she's like a friend to me. We have our girl chat every week. It's great. And while sometimes I feel like I've run out of the program, you know, I'm doing great at school, I've met the other students in this program, and we have a social meeting like once a month, and I've met some of them, and they're all great, but they can't grow out of the program. They need it, and who knows where they'd be without it. And people all over the spectrum leave these programs because they need somebody to fight in our corner for us because people aren't going to give us that opportunity. People just push us aside because unfortunately, we live in a society where there is still disability stigma, and it's very rampant. And so I want to leave you with this. I implore you, please, keep Project Reach going because we need you guys, you guys at this table, to fight for us. That way, you can make sure that the ten to one ratio is not a self-fulfilling prophecy. Thank you very much.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Malik Arthur, and I am an alumni of the New York City College of Technology. I would like to thank the CUNY Board of Trustees for having me here today. And I just want to say, from the speeches that we've heard so far, I can attest to that, and one of my mantras is, in the word disability is the word ability. I want to repeat myself, in the word disability is the word ability. So first and foremost, I would like to thank my City Tech CUNY Leeds advisor, Linda Rivera, for nominating me for this opportunity, as well as Vice Chancellor Maybanks and Carrie Shockley, and as well as Dr. Marling Song, the Vice President of the Student Affairs at City Tech. In 2014, I became enrolled in the CUNY Leeds Program because I knew I would need additional support to work on my career readiness skills and my confidence. As a person diagnosed with autism, I was concerned about first impressions when it came to starting new internship and job opportunities and how people would perceive me. I also wasn't sure if my skills would be belittled or underestimated, or if people would give me a chance to fit in with the job environment. Over the next two semesters, I worked closely with my CUNY Leeds advisor on improving my communication and interviewing skills, as well as through mock interviews, developing a resume and cover letters, and practicing being comfortable socializing by attending networking events. At times, I became frustrated with not receiving offers. However, Ms. Rivera supported me by remaining optimistic and treating this process as a learning experience. In 2015, I participated in the CUNY Service Corps Program, where I was able to really begin my internship career at the Federal Reserve Bank of New York. Due to my excellent performance, they invited me back to intern in the summers of 2016 and 2017. This internship experience really helped me to show what my true abilities were. I also held part-time employment at City Tech's Center for Student Accessibility as an assistive tech assistant. In 2018, I graduated City Tech with a bachelor's degree in computer engineering technology, and within a month, with the guidance of my CUNY Leeds advisor, I was able to secure full-time employment. Since June of 2019, I accepted a role where I was employed at the Kings County District Attorney's Office as a help desk technician and have been recently promoted to senior help desk technician. I look forward to growing within this company and exploring more opportunities in the near future. From my experience as a CUNY Leeds student, I have learned that no matter what obstacles I face, I have the ability to succeed and excel. I have learned that it is imperative to utilize each opportunity and resource available. As an alumni, I hope to continue to be a positive role model for current students to follow who are enrolled with the CUNY Leeds Program and to motivate students with disabilities to connect to their true abilities. I also want to show them where I first started and how the CUNY Leeds Program has empowered me and how it has helped me to climb the mountain to know where I am going academically as well as professionally. I am so fortunate to be part of such a unique program at CUNY, and till this day, I look forward to connecting with my CUNY Leeds advisor to check in and seek support for any career-related opportunities throughout my professional career. Thank you again for this opportunity and your time, CUNY Board of Trustees.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Buenos tardes.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. It's a little quiet in here, so. I want to start off by thanking the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Mathus Rodriguez, and the Chancellery, of course, and of course, I can't forget about Vice Chancellor Maybank because everything that I'm going to say happened under your leadership. So I'm going to start off with my name. It's Lanin Jacob. I currently serve as the Chair of the CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities. Who are we? CCSD, an advocacy group that represents nearly ten thousand CUNY disabled students. I am also a proud parent to a neurodiverse teenager. I'm hopeful that CUNY will become his home. I recently earned an associate's degree in liberal arts at Bronx Community College, and now I attend the CUNY School of Professional Studies, SPS, majoring in disability studies. At CUNY, as a disabled woman, I found a support system that ensured that as long as I was willing to work for it, I could succeed. Like many proud disabled people, eagerness to work wasn't lacking. I came to CUNY looking for a change, but what I found was my own potential and a path to a new career. My experiences as a student with the Disability Services Office and CCSD would eventually lead to employment as a disability accommodation specialist at Hostos Community College. I'm very proud of that. For me, success began with Disability Services Office at BCC, and it was reinforced by a great team of outstanding disability professionals and mentors throughout the university. I want to thank Maria Pantoja at BCC and Christopher Leiden at SPS for the academic support they have provided me through disability services offices. I would also like to acknowledge Charmaine Townsall at York, Raymond Perez at Hostos, and Steve Kleinberg at the Central Office. They are my CCSD advisors. Thank you for helping me develop the skills I never knew I had and for identifying in me what I had personally yet to see. Now, CCSD, under their mentorship, has led to being featured in City and State as part of the Power One Hundred Most Influential People in Higher Education in 2022 and 2023. I want to give a special shout-out to USS Chairperson and CUNY Student Trustee, Salim Matas Dumboya. It's a privilege to chair this high honor with another fellow student leader. And finally, I would like to urge the university leadership to continue and expand its investment in CUNY disability programs. These services at CUNY, they change lives. And if you need a support system, a change, or simply to discover your true potential, you have to come to CUNY. Thank you. Muchas gracias.
So, as you can now attest, in the disability program space, CUNY leads, CUNY reaches beyond what others may think necessary or customary, and with that, CUNY is unlimited in our impact on the lives and families of those with disabilities seeking to have transformative experiences. For these outstanding students, we must continue to expand accessibility, assure human dignity, and allow each student the agency to be a part of the experience that is CUNY. I end with this quote from Christopher Reeves, "So many of our dreams at first seem impossible, then they seem improbable, and then, when we summon the will, they soon become inevitable." Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chancellor.
I think I formally request that you move my report to the end of the agenda because this is just.
Actually, Mr. Chair, could I take a point of personal privilege? Absolutely.
Just as the brother of someone who lives with autism, I want to thank everybody here for that and remind you that April is Autism Month. It's coming up in a few weeks, and invite all the trustees to come to the College of Staten Island, we just cut the ribbon for the Willbrook Mile, something I worked on for a very long time. As you know, my brother Steven, he was a Special Olympian, a champion, he won medals on the campus at Willbrook, and it was a place of nightmares, and now the College of Staten Island is a place where dreams come true. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I just want to say a few things about these amazing schools. Isaiah, thank you for, you know, raising your voice for adaptive sports. You're inspiring in all you do, and I love the fact that, you know, you have somewhere to be here at CUNY that your family could come and support you with. Mary, you are so inspiring, and I just want you to know that your voice is speaking for so many, so when you continue to look for that value that you have, just know that you're raising value in so many other people. Malik, thank you for your professionalism and your spirit. You are a role model for so many future students. And then Lynn, you're incredible, you know, you did a fantastic job. Thank you for representing us all with such dignity and just to know that you're going to leave CUNY with a degree to continue to support this disability community, something that I am proud and privileged to have you a part of, so thank you.
Thank you, Myra. Good luck.
Thank you, I think, Chair Thompson, and Trustees, President, Vice Chancellors, and our phenomenal students. It's been a busy few weeks since we last met, and I have lots of exciting news to share. You all know how committed I am to dramatically expanding the paid internships and apprenticeship opportunities for our students. I am pleased that the governor announced last week that six hundred CUNY students are participating in paid internships this spring at no cost to the employer. This is thanks to a four-million program from Governor Hochul that gives our students the workforce skills they will need after college and the money they depend to survive, they depend on to survive. It also gives small businesses access to the most talented students in the world without compromising their budgets. Many of these companies want to work with our students but simply cannot afford to pay them. This program is really a win-win for our university and our city. You know that I've always said that I want to be known as the patron saint of paid internships for CUNY students. I am happy to pass on that title to the governor, to the mayor, or to any employer who understands the incredible value that our students bring to their businesses. As you know, it is budget season, and we have been telling the story of CUNY and our power to transform lives to our elected officials at the city, state, and federal levels. I have traveled to Albany several times since our last meeting with Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace and Vice Chancellor Jeff Fodos, and was so happy to see students and alumni at our luncheon events at Solmost and caucus weekends, and pleased to engage with our elected representatives to answer their questions and discuss CUNY's great value proposition. One of this year's greatest success story has been CUNY Reconnect, which helped bring back more than sixteen thousand students this academic year. The program was advanced by City Council Speaker Adrien Adams, an alum of York College. Earlier this month, a Hunter College student who benefited from the program introduced Speaker Adams at her 2023 State of the City address. Karina Castro is a mother of twins who is pursuing a psychology degree at Hunter. Like many of our student parents, she returned to school to advance her economic mobility and increase her earning potential to better help her family. It was an emotional moment for all of us to hear Karina share her story, which is a powerful example of the work we do and why it matters to lift all New Yorkers and encourage those who pause their education to return to college. When we talk about boosting enrollment, it is not just about increasing our numbers. It is about staying true to our mission of increasing access to higher education for New Yorkers of all means and backgrounds, students who will ultimately strengthen our workforce and our city. That is why this month, CUNY waived the application fee for all seniors at New York City Public Schools. The waiver will run through April fifteenth, and we actually are thinking about maybe extending it, and we want to encourage all students who haven't applied to college to do so now, and we want to remove any barriers they have to applying and ultimately enrolling in our campuses. Another initiative to boost enrollment is our ad campaigns. You're seeing the display monitors around, around all of you. You all have seen the degrees without debt advertisement on our trains, buses, ferry terminals, and CUNY office space throughout the city. They are daily illustrations of CUNY pride and our unmatched value proposition. The ads also started running in Spanish on digital platforms earlier this month. I am also excited to share that we redeveloped our database of online degrees on the CUNY website with the more than one hundred and forty degree programs now reflected at cuny.edu/online. Our new CUNY online advertisement campaign is set to launch this week, and will help prospective students explore the high-quality, affordable, and flexible online offerings across the university, all in one single place. As always, I have no shortage of good news to share. This year, we received more than twelve million dollars as part of the U.S. Congressional Fiscal Year 2023 Omnibus Appropriations, better known as earmarks. This money will go towards fourteen projects and programs across nine campuses. These include workforce development, internships, vocational training, mentoring, and academic programs. The allocations were made by U.S. Senate Majority Leader Schumer, Senator Gillibrand, and Congress members Clark, Espallar, Meeks, Meng, Torres, and Velazquez, as well as former Representative Maloney. We appreciate their support, and last week, I visited many of these elected officials again during a visit to Washington, D.C., and thanked them for their ongoing support for CUNY. In more good news from our nation's capital, we were delighted to learn that the U.S. Department named four of our schools as top producers of Fulbright recipients. Congratulations to Hunter, Baruch, Queens College, and the CUNY School of Law. CUNY prides itself on connecting students to top-notch academic opportunities like the Fulbright and furthering peaceful relations between the people of the United States and those from other countries, and that remains as important today as ever. The 2023 winners include nine CUNY students and five faculty members. Governor Hochul also announced last week that the Center for Puerto Rican Studies at Hunter, better known as Centro, and the Dominican Studies Institute at City College will receive three million dollars. We are grateful for this generous gift, which will support this institution's ongoing operations to preserve the culture and history of Latino New Yorkers. This year also marks the fiftieth anniversary of Centro, which is a special place in my. which is a special place in my heart because it was my first home at CUNY. And it has an honor to be part of a place that served as a crucial thread to connect the evolving experiences of Puerto Rican communities everywhere. Now, some elements from good news from my speed round. Last week, I joined Governor Hochul and Mayor Adams, as well as industry leaders and a few Broadway stars for the launch of the partnership for the city of New York City's We Love New York City campaign. The city and CUNY have always had a meaningful connection, and I look forward to seeing the success of this campaign in the coming months. During the first week of March, we held CUNY's Women's Conference Week. The chairman alluded to that. A new initiative spearheaded by Associate Vice Chancellor Dolley Martinez. This annual week-long conference now brings together two university events that occur separately. The CUNY Student Women's Leadership Conference, now in its 19th year, and the Fourth Annual CUNY Career Compass for Women Leaders Conference. I want to thank the planning committee, which included Macaulay Honors College Dean Darah Byrne and Queens Borough Community College President Christine Magino, and also the trustees that Chair Thompson identified who participated in the events and the panels. Speaking of women and empowerment, the United States Mint announced last month that the Reverend Dr. Pauli Murray, a 1933 Hunter College graduate who is considered one of the most important social justice advocates of the 20th century, will be a 2024 honoree for the American Women's Quarters Program. Mary was a lawyer, activist, poet, and the first Black woman ordained as an Episcopalian priest. She also helped to co-found the National Organization for Women. Next month, in April, is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, dedicated to education and prevention strategies surrounding this critical issue. CUNY's Office of the General Counsel, led by Derek Davis, is encouraging campuses to host related events and can provide suggestions for partner organizations. One university-wide event will be Denim Day, happening April 26. All CUNY community members are invited to wear jeans and other denim clothing to show solidarity with sexual assault survivors. Finally, after 15 years at CUNY, Pam Silverblatt, Senior Vice Chancellor of Labor Relations, will be retiring. Her tenure has been shaped by many collective bargaining achievements that have benefited the university and our stakeholders. We want to wish you the very best on our next chapter. So, thank you, Pam, for your service. This, Mr. Chancellor, brings me to the end of my third report of 2023. I hope that everyone has an enjoyable and relaxing spring break. And to those celebrating this month and next month, I wish you a blessed Ramadan, a good Passover, and a joyous Easter. I look forward to our next meeting when we update you on all these initiatives and others that we have come up with. Back to you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Item number one, the draft minutes of the Special Board Meeting Executive Session of November 21st, 2022, and the draft minutes of the Regular Board Meeting and Executive Session of December 12th, 2022. I'd like to move item number one. May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Any comments? All right, let's move to approve the minutes. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item one is approved. Item number two, the Committee on Audit and Compliance. Let me call Committee on Audit and Compliance Chair Kevin Kim to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee on Audit and Compliance considered the following matter at its meeting on March 6, 2023. Item 2A is a resolution to approve the Fiscal Year 2022 Uniform Guidance Report. The university's external auditor, Grant Thornton LLP, completed the audit of the university's compliance with the uniform administrative requirements for Fiscal Year 2022 and will be issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on the report. The focus of this year's report was on federal assistance programs and funds received under the Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. The university's Audit and Compliance Committee approved the Fiscal Year 2022 Uniform Guidance Report at its March 6, 2023 meeting. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now move to vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Item number three, the Committee on Finance and Administration. Let me call on Committee on Finance and Administration Chair Fernando Ferreira to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, 3A is a resolution to authorize funding for the establishment of a CUNY Security Operations Center, which would establish at the university a center to reduce the operational and reputational risks by identifying potential cybersecurity threats to the information assets and the university and its colleges, and implementing strategies to mitigate these risks. The required equipment, software, and services can appropriately be obtained using existing centralized contracts through the New York State Office of General Services. Therefore, the university seeks authorization to request the dormitory authority of the state to procure on behalf of the city/university advanced anti-malware and behavioral analysis software, firewall upgrades, and deployment support of the same from Palo Alto Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $9,100,000 and a security information and event management system from IBM Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $1 million under the terms of Palo Alto Incorporated's and IBM Incorporated's respective OGS contracts. The combined authorization and expenditures under this resolution will not exceed $19,600,000 over the period of five years following the adoption of this resolution, which includes up to $10.1 million in capital expenditures and up to $9.6 million in tax levy expenditures. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move item 3A.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion on the item? Any comments? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The Personnel Matters Report of the committee contains the non-faculty employee actions previously contained in the Committee for Faculty Staff and Administration Report. These actions specifically requested by the Board of Trustees on October 28, 2018, and non-inclusive of all employee actions. All university appointments, as you know, go through an assessment and approval process. The Personnel Matters Report reflects selected ECP actions that have been entered by the colleges into the CUNY system of record between December 23, 2022, and February 5, 2025. The report contains a total of 25 ECP actions, including 10 interim appointments, seven regular appointments, four employee actions, and four separations. Mr. Chairman, I move item 3B.
May I have a second for item 3B?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Any questions? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3C is a resolution to appoint Sarah Luke as executive legal counsel and chief legal affairs and labor relations officer at Brooklyn College. She has over 16 years of progressive legal experience in higher education, has held positions such as Senior Counsel for Higher Education and Labor and Employment, General Counsel and Vice President, and Senior and Assistant General Counsel. Holds a J.D. degree from the University of Michigan Law School and a BA degree in Psychology from the University of Michigan. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 3C.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3D is a resolution to authorize a contract with the Donald Learn Plus ISG to provide services to support rapid development of online academic programs across CUNY colleges. In order to meet enrollment goals and to support the educational needs of city and state, the university plans to develop up to 40 new online programs for launch in the fall of this year and an additional 40 to 50 programs for launch in the fall of 2024. Outsourcing some portion of the CUNY online program development is necessary to achieve the desired pace of expansion and ensure quality standards as internal capacity and expertise are developed. An RFP was issued on January 17, 2023, and 12 vendors responded. The evaluations committee selected O'Donnell Learn Plus ISG as the most responsive vendor. The university seeks approval to enter into a contract with this vendor to provide service to support rapid development of online programs for an amount not to exceed $5,223,335 for an initial, for an initial two-year term and not to exceed $2,284,980 for an additional one-year renewal option for a total not to exceed $7,508,315 for a three-year period. Mr. Chairman, accordingly, I move approval of item 3D.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Discussion on the item? Any comments, any questions? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3E is a resolution to approve the FY 2024 City/university of New York Investment Portfolio Spending Rate to ensure compliance with the New York Prudent Management and Institutional Funds Act the university's required to analyze the investment portfolio to determine the appropriate spending rate for the upcoming fiscal year. The university proposed a 4% spending rate for fiscal 2024, which is the same rate as in fiscal 2023. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move item 3E.
May I have a second for that item?
Second.
Any discussion on item 3E? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
And that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ferreira. Item number four, Committee on Education Policy. Call on Committee on Education Policy Chair Jill O'Donnell Tormey to prevent, to present and move the following items.
I'm not going to prevent.
I have to try. I've got to learn to read. It's killing me.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Education Policy considered the following matters at its meeting on March 6, 2023, which I will now present to the board. Item 4A, Policy Item 4A is a resolution to establish a program in data science leading to the Associate of Science Degree at the Borough Manhattan Community College. The data science program will help address the increasing demand for workers with data science skills by preparing students for entry-level roles in business, industry, government, and not-for-profit organizations, and to pursue additional education necessary for more advanced roles. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 4B is a resolution to establish a program in Japanese language and culture leading to the Bachelor of Arts Degree at Hunter College. Due to increasing student interest in Japanese studies nationally and at the college, Hunter College proposes to build on existing courses within two Japanese minors to offer a major program in Japanese language and culture leading to the BA degree. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 4C is a resolution to establish academic departments at Gutman Community College. In the report from the reaccreditation site visit in April of 2021, the Middle States Commission on Higher Education Team suggested the creation of a department structure at Gutman Community College to provide enhanced programmatic guidance and faculty support. Gutman determined that organizing the programs of study within three distinct departments is needed to provide adequate support for programmatic growth and oversight as the college expands enrollment. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion on item 4C? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 4D is a resolution to amend the Gutman Community College Governance Plan to acknowledge organizational changes at the college. The proposed amendments consist of technical revisions to remove outdated references and update the titles of representatives in alignment with new organizational structures based on the establishment of academic departments. Mr. Chairman, I present 4D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion on item 4D? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 4E is a resolution to amend the York College Charter. To better reflect the nature of the work it performs, the Department of Student Development at York College is changing its name to the Department of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management. The amendments to the charter reflect the new name change. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Okay, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4F, Policy Item 4F is a resolution requesting to award Maria de Longoria early tenure at Medgar Evans College with an application of bylaw 6.2(c)(2). Dr. de Longoria's scholarship, forward-thinking research, and dedication to curriculum innovation for the betterment of students demonstrates her exceptional value to her department, the college, and the university. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 4G1 is a resolution requesting to appoint Masha Gessen with immediate tenure at the Graduate School of Journalism with the application of bylaws 6.2(b) and 11.5. Masha Gessen is a renowned educator and internationally-known journalist who is committed to help launch the next generation of diverse journalists. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4G1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 4G2 is a resolution requesting to appoint Terry McGovern with immediate tenure as Senior Associate Dean of Academic and Student Affairs with an underlying appointment as professor at the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy with the application of bylaw 6.2(b). Professor McGovern is a progressive and elite thought leader whose career has focused on the intersection between human rights and public health and is highlighted by successful policy and advocacy work to protect the rights of marginalized groups and communities. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4G2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 4H is a resolution requesting the approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. The March Faculty Personnel Matters Report was generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First, the university's system of record, between December 27, 2022, and February 5, 2023. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4H for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on this? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 4.1 is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Education Policy in summary form. The dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data. Mr. Chairman, I present... Mr. Chairman, I present item 4.i for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Item number five, the Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. I now call on Committee on Advancement and External Affairs Chair Arayne Cortez-Vasquez to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee for Advancement and External Affairs considers the following matter at its meeting on March 6, 2023, which I now present to the board. Item 5A is a resolution requesting the naming of the David A. Coulter and Susan Weeks Opportunity Fund at Macaulay Honors College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 5B is a resolution requesting the naming of the Juana and El Melquido Gisbert Endowment at Nieman College. Mr. Chairman, I present the item 5B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Thank you. Item 5C is a resolution requesting the naming of the Bernard S. Miller Faculty Center at Hunter College High School. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 5C is approved.
Item 5D is a resolution requesting the naming of the Harriet Gruber Lounge at the Baker Theater Building at Hunter College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on it? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 5E is a resolution requesting the naming of the Leonard A. Louder Fellowships for the History of Art and the Emily Brown Fellowships for the History of Art at the Hunter College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Thank you. Item 5F is a resolution requesting the naming of the Professor Isabel Lee Endowed Memorial Scholarship at Uhenia Maria de Ostos Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Thank you. Item 5G is a resolution requesting the naming of the Ruth and Howard Newman, Director of the Office of Prestigious Scholarships and Fellowships at Hunter College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5G for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Thank you. Item 5H is a resolution requesting the naming of the Ruth B. Nieman Class of 54 Mother's Day Scholarship Fund at Hunter College. Mr. Chairman, I present for consideration 5H for the board to look at.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we're going to now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, trustee. Item six, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I now call on Committee for Facilities Planning and Management Vice Chair Sandra Wilken to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters as its meeting on March 6, 2023, which I will now present to the board. Item 6A, resolution to authorize a lease with New York City Transit Authority to construct and operate at temporary bus parking facility at York College. The MTA is modernizing its outdated Jamaica Bus Depot to serve the demand for bus transportation in Queens and needs a temporary relocation site during that project. York College has an undeveloped and currently unused approximately 3.5-acre site, Site 9, located at 9420 Guy R. Brewer Boulevard, Jamaica, Queens. As Site 9 is adjacent to the Jamaica Bus Depot, the site is advantageous for MTA and provides York College an opportunity to generate significant revenue for an unused asset. The lease further provides York College with the option of having Site 9 returned in its current condition or having it reconfigured for use as the college parking lot. As outlined in the resolution, the lease includes several measures to protect the university and York College and its operations during MTA's use. The lease also requires MTA to comply with state requirements related to the participation of MWBEs and SDVOBs.
Item has been presented for the board's consideration. We have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Comments? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposed? That item's approved.
Item 6B, resolution to authorize the boiler plant rehabilitation project at Bronx Community College. This project is a major campus-wide infrastructure upgrade to replace all three of the original 45-year-old boilers with new boilers and associated piping, heating exchanges, equipment, and controls. Three existing underground fuel oil storage tanks and piping serving the boilers will be replaced. This project will eliminate over $40 million of deferred maintenance backlog, bringing it to a state of good repair. Construction will be managed by the New York Power Authority and is anticipated to commence in June of 2023 and be substantially completed by July 2025. The board requests CUCF to designate capital funding in an amount up to $44,916,851. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee. I'd like the board to consider an additional resolution to pay tribute to Merle Evers-Williams. I would ask the secretary to read the resolution for the record, and we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, could you read the resolution?
Absolutely. The Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, resolution to pay tribute to Merle Evers-Williams on her 90th birthday, March 27, 2023. Whereas Merle Evers-Williams is a groundbreaking pioneer, civil rights activist, and the widow of the late civil rights activist Medgar Evers, for whom Medgar Evers College in Brooklyn was named in 1970. And whereas Merle Evers-Williams has dedicated her life to fighting social justice causes, served as chairwoman of the NAACP, and alongside her husband fought for voting rights, equal access to public accommodations, and equal rights in Mississippi. And whereas Merle Evers-Williams is also an accomplished author, first co-authoring a memoir of her late husband's life in 1967, For Us, the Living, and later in 1999, autobiography titled Watch Me Fly: What I Learned on the Way to Becoming the Woman I Was Meant to Be, as well as serving as editor on the autobiography of Medgar Evers, A Hero's Life and Legacy Revealed Through His Writings, Letters, and Speeches in 2005. And whereas Merle Evers-Williams attended Alcorn State University, where she studied education, and later graduated from Pomona College with a degree in sociology. And whereas Merle Evers-Williams recently turned 90 and donated her archival records to Pomona College to inspire future generations with thousands of photos of U.S. presidents' campaign materials and congressional transcripts, which offer a unique perspective on the civil rights era, but also on her incredible life as a tireless leader, icon of the civil rights movement, and treasure to the entire country. And whereas the Evers family legacy lives on in every student who passes through the halls of the City University of New York's Medgar Evers College, and the university cherishes our relationship with her, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York honors Merle Evers-Williams on this momentous occasion of her 90th birthday and the establishment of the Merle Evers-Williams Class of 68 collection at Pomona College.
First, I'd like to make a motion to add item number seven to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, that item has been added. I now would like to move item number seven. May I have a second?
Second.
And just on this topic, before we vote, I'd like to thank President Medgar Evers for bringing some of this to our attention, and also our Deputy Chancellor, Glenda Grace. Glenda, thank you so much for making sure that we were aware and that we could honor Merle Evers-Williams on her 90th birthday, and for the contributions that she has made. And in addition, just for the family's involvement, and her daughter Rena also, for the family's involvement in moving Medgar Evers forward, and in working along with us to advance opportunity for all of our students, and particularly the students at Medgar Evers. So, I'd like to thank you both for making sure that we didn't let this moment pass us by. So, thank you both so much. Thank you, Pat, and thank you, Glenda. Thank you so much. Any other, any questions or comments, discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. There being no further business, I ask for a motion to adjourn, or I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.
[inaudible]